Welcome to the Atkins City Council meeting for Tuesday, August 12, 2025. Welcome everyone this evening, and we do have a new recording system in place, and it's on YouTube Live tonight, just installed a couple of weeks ago. And just put you know on that camera back there, and microphone is up above, so. First item is to call the board and roll call, and we'll first stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we begin with the roll call for the meeting's president this evening. We'll have Jim Kane.
President.
David Fisher.
President.
E.J. Bell.
President.
Samantha Peterson.
President.
Trevor Durski.
President.
I'd also like to introduce Shelley Anis today, city clerk. Welcome her to the first official meeting tonight. Her presence would be appreciated in the meeting, so we'll proceed on with. Who are the agenda by the city council, so they're inclined to move the motion?
Motion approved agenda.
Motion by Durski.
I'll second.
Second by Peterson. Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call votes, Jim Kane.
Aye.
David Fisher.
Aye.
E.J. Bell.
Aye.
Samantha Peterson.
Aye.
And Trevor Durski.
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, we have a citizen's opportunity to address the council and any items that are not on the agenda. And in compliance with the Oklahoma Board of Representatives law, no action or deliberation can occur on items presented during the citizens forum. We ask that you proceed to the lectern and state your even address for the record. Many speakers are encouraged, so don't their comments to no more than three minutes. Seeing none, we move on to unfinished business, which we have now, right? Number five, new business. With that, we begin with the 2025 Sanitary Sewer Line Pipe Bursting Project. Scott Ford, city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. Council just run through these items in the packet with you. The first item is a resolution accepting the work that was done by Dave Schmidt Construction, Cedar Rapids, for the 2025 Sanitary Sewer Line Pipe Bursting Project. If you recall, that that you're meeting on May 13th, council work contract to Dave Schmidt Construction in the amount of $104,298 for this project. So the resolution identifies that we had a couple of change orders, reducing the scope of the project and reducing the overall cost, so I'll get to that in just a little bit. The next sheet is a letter from Snyder Associates, a private consulting engineer, indicating that all the work has been completed in compliance with projects previously approved plans and specifications, and recommending that the council accept the work on the project. What we do there is when we, this, we only have the one pay estimate, so it serves as a final, and so then we hold the retainage for not less than 30 days until we get the lien waivers, then release the retainage. So this, this represents acceptance of work and all the work of the retainage we paid out. The next item is a letter of supplemental from Snyder reviewing pay application number one and change order request number one and number two. The change order request number one, if you recall, was previously, we had deleted the seeding portion of the project that kind of had a high quality price associated with this, so we'll do that in-house or find another alternative to that rather than pre-contract. And then also, we deleted the HMA pavement restoration piece from that project as well. So that change order request number one, for your consideration, formally approve that, reduces the project by $5,471 in contract value. There's also some less, lesser than specified quantities for the project, not a lot, but they were in the area of, let's see, that was sub base. Yeah, modified sub base and topsoil, so that further reduced the overall cost of the contract to the city by $2,013.25. So you've got those two change orders in your packet. And then also, as I mentioned, the copy of that, that first pay application in the packet as well. It'll also just include, just to remind you of where the location, the limits of the project were, and just north of the water treatment plant. This was, if you remember, involved roughly about 190 feet, 200 feet of RCP pipe that we had replaced. It had significant deterioration, side walls had deteriorated pretty substantially. The diameter thickness, especially on the top, was reduced almost to nothing, so definitely was in risk of a substantial failure in that situation. So I got the opportunity to see, see the actual RCP pipe that was taken out. This involved, of course, the pipe bursting method, and what we commonly refer to as the trenchless technology. So that's what we used for this, to install the new eight-inch HDP pipe there. So project had a completion date of August 1st, and it was completed well within that completion date. So just offer that up as background, Nick, with Snyder's here also. He wants to share any information about the whole project, etc., but I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them, okay?
Nick, do you have any comments on the project at all?
The project went well, it went pretty smoothly. The pipe, Scott Looney, was quite curated. In fact, when I excavated parts of it to get some of the pipe bursting equipment, it started crumbling. So definitely was a heated project, and went very smoothly once they got it set up, so. Overall, a very successful project.
With that, my interject at this point, Scott, is there any way to turn up the volume for our customers on video?
Got it.
Adjustments possible?
No.
I had a comment that it was, the volume was low, but if that's, yeah. Okay, all right. We are proceeding with the meeting, but for the audio, there is a pretty much a mark in progress, so.
Yeah.
We will continue to fine tune that. Okay, with that, we ask for a motion to approve pay application number one to Dave Schmidt Construction. That's in the amount of $91,973.06.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Kane.
Second.
Second by Durski. Further questions, comments? Hearing none, roll call vote is Jim Kane.
Aye.
David Fisher.
Aye.
E.J. Bell.
Aye.
Samantha Peterson.
Aye.
And Trevor Durski.
Aye.
Motion carries. Also on the same topic, motion to approve change order number one. This is a deduction of $5,471. And change order number two, deduction of $2,013.25. Do you have such a motion?
Motion approved.
Motion by Kane.
I'll second.
Second by Peterson. Further discussion? Comments? Hearing none, roll call, Jim Kane.
Aye.
David Fisher.
Aye.
E.J. Bell.
Aye.
Samantha Peterson.
Aye.
Trevor Durski.
Aye.
Motion carries. Also on the same topic, a motion to approve the resolution 2025-001. This is a resolution accepting the work of the 2025 Sanitary Sewer Line Pipe Bursting Project. We have a motion for that as well.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Kane.
Second.
Second by Fisher. Further discussion? Roll call vote, Jim Kane.
Aye.
David Fisher.
Aye.
E.J. Bell.
Aye.
Samantha Peterson.
Aye.
Trevor Durski.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to item number five C. We have Fire Station Building Improvement Project, and the project update and review, and the pay application. Scott?
Thanks, Mayor. So this is pay application number six already for this project. Just in the way of some background, done the work to date. The contractors continuing the exterior installation of the jiffy board, the roof panels. Been completed and seen, so the roof is pretty much done at this point. The mezzanine area, they're continuing to frame that and get that deck ready, so they can pour to the top of that. That should be going on maybe later this week. They're working on roughing in some of the M and P under the slab, where the slab will be, and the oil separator, oil and sand separator. So then they'll start the grade, grading work on the interior slab, probably late this week into next week. Working on window and door fravings, pipe bollard installation. And then kind of looking ahead, again, they're looking at that, prepping the floor slab and floor drains for mostly next week. And continued work on the exterior wall panels. So still on a pretty good timeframe as far as the schedule goes. Definitely still ahead of their anticipated, or at least per the contract document, completion date. So still, still looking good there. In terms of the pay application number six, just walk through that with you real quick. So way of review against with Garland Construction, of course, a bell plane. Original contract sum was $3,376,000. Net change orders, $6,647.30. So at this stage, we're 37% complete for the project and are at about half a percent on change orders. So that is really, really good. Generally, on a project like this, you might see by the time it's done, 10 to 15% in change orders. So we're right now 37% completed and half a percent. So total completed and stored material to date, $1,263,397.30. So kind of working down there. The total paid, previous certificates of payments were $913,282.50. So that leaves for this payment, $286,944.94. So leaving the balance left to retainage of $2,182,590.86. So. Again, a lot of the items covered under this pay estimate are just the general administrative costs, site work, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, framing, post-antidistinct. So. Anybody has any questions on that pay application?
I would add too, that the roof panels are now installed, and so that lets them work more efficiently in the weather, of course, getting the rain out of there, so that's a big milestone, once you get the roof on there. Weather becomes a factor, so they're making good progress.
And just to clarify, because I think there seems to be maybe the view that it's going really slow. It's still on track for, what was, what was the estimated completion at, at night?
No, ahead.
Just wanted to clarify, because I heard a little bit of that this weekend, and why is it taking so long?
Yeah, a couple people have asked me that, and I was like, nah, I think we're a little ahead.
That's all I said, was we're, I have nothing to say we're off track from estimated completion.
Unfortunately, I've seen in my old career, there's a day that goes and somebody's out there working, they're working on another job. You know, there's usually always a couple of people around doing something. They may not have a full crew every single day, but generally, at least at some point during the day, there are people, people there working, but yeah, they're, they're definitely well ahead of schedule now. You'll get, that's why we're putting the jinx on, but they're definitely at this stage.
It's the information we have at this point.
Yeah, well, well ahead of the scheduled completion date.
Okay, with that, council entertained a motion to approve pay application number six to Garland Construction for the amount of $286,944.94.
Motion approved.
Motion by Durski.
Second.
Second by Kane. Questions, comments on the motion? Hearing none, roll call vote is Jim Kane.
Aye.
Trevor Durski.
Aye.
E.J. Bell.
Aye.
David Fisher.
Aye.
Samantha Peterson.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, moving on to item five C, this is ordinance modifications to the city administrator, city council, and mayor chapters of the code ordinances of the city. Two zero zero five is amended, and Scott, give us some background.
You read, thank you, Mayor, so you've got a copy of the draft of ordinance number, would be number 233 in your path, council. This amends the city administrator's ordinance, and largely, the purpose of this is to reflect the fact that we now have a separate city clerk. You know, the current ordinance, which was ordinance number 223, identified under definitions, city administrator is the, is the city clerk and performs all functions required of the position of city clerk. So now that we have a city clerk on board, we needed to ensure the consistencies between the city clerk ordinance that we have on the books, which is fine, completely fine the way it's written, as well as the city administrator ordinance. There's also some provisions in there for the mayor and the council ordinance. So for example, under the council, in terms of appointments, it did not identify specifically that the council appoints the city administrator, appoints the city clerk. And so we've kind of cleaned up some of those areas. But I should also add that our city attorney has reviewed both of these ordinances, and his suggestions were taken into consideration as well. Largely, just going through the chapter 23 city administrator ordinance, pretty much the vernacular is pretty close to the same thing that you have currently with ordinance number 223 versus 233. I think it just is worded a lot more contemporary, more sophisticated language, I think, in terms of the new draft. But again, largely, the responsibilities is identified. I think the current ordinance identified 17 different items. The one that I drafted identifies 90. You know, we added just a couple of things in there, but not really anything that I would call as substantive changes. So for example, the administrative responsibilities, where we say the city administrator is responsible of the council for the administration of municipal affairs, is directed by that body. All departments in the city, except city attorney, report to the, report to and be responsible to city administrator. That's, again, all those things are pretty much what you have in your existing ordinance now. So for example, number one, under powers and duties, this is now supervise all city departments, plan, direct, review, and participate activities, projects of such departments. Just again, the, the language is slightly different, but it's pretty much saying the exact same thing that we have now. The other things that I probably have added that are looked maybe a little new would be under the qualifications, 23.02. The mayor has, he mentioned that he thought maybe that one, we should just leave in the job description, so I don't take any exception to that. That's fine if the council would want to take out 2302 and just leave that in the job description itself. That's fine. And then I think the mayor also had mentioned his review under number 13, under the purchasing, supervise all city purchasing, approve capital and repair expenditures up to $2,500 for operational needs, up to $5,000 for emergency needs without prior approval from the council. That's pretty common in most city administrator ordinances. Mostly, it's, it's actually quite a bit higher. In, in most cases, it's usually about $2,500 in most cases. But that's the language that I had in Clear Lake and operated under for 24 years there without any, any issues. In fact, I never, never even had to use it, but, but otherwise, again, some of the changes just reflect the fact that we do have a full-time city clerk on staff now. So for example, some of the language we have, and I've heard, or it just talks about completion of state reports. I got pretty specific in identifying some of those specific reports in the new draft. So for example, assistant clerk treasurer and preparing and overseeing, not just reports, but I've, I've actually identified some of the reports. For example, the annual budget, urban renewal report, executive financing certifications, and other reports. Also, we didn't really have anything specifically stating about working, in this case, again, with the clerk treasurer, completing the city's annual audit, so I've added language. It's pretty well implied in the ordinance that we have now that those are things that we need to work on. But in the new draft, I've gone the extra distance of actually spelling those things out. Also, again, our current ordinance just kind of indicates loosely that, again, working with committees and boards of the city, I've identified, again, working with specific boards like the planning zone commission, board adjustment, library board, kind of those kinds of agencies. Overseeing contracts for outside services, we, again, that's pretty much implied in the ordinance that we have now, but I've mentioned to get things like law enforcement contracts, solid waste collection contracts, those kinds of things. Just again, specifically mentioning those particular items. But otherwise, that's about it on that one. The next one is one where we talk about the, the mayor and the council. So again, looking at cleaning goes up again. The first one, changing that, 1501, it identifies that, in this case, the mayor is elected for a four-year term. Our current ordinance, I don't know, but it doesn't seem that it was ever updated. In our current code, there'll usually be a handwritten note that says, this was amended by the ordinance number. We can find that, and that, that isn't the case on both council and mayor. We're in case elected for a four-year term, and in case elected for a two-year term. But you had an election in 2012, 55% of voters approved changing the terms from two years to four years. So it is completely valid that you're elected to the four-year term. But our ordinance doesn't seem that it was ever, you know, updated to reflect the fact that you do effects are a four-year term. So, so while we're at it, cleaning that up, otherwise, there's really not a lot changed for the mayor. The, same for the council, again, just identifying the appointments. Oh, right, for example, too, I should mention on the 15.03 on the mayor, where the mayor appoints the following, the mayor of town, library board trustees. I added the language, subject to council approval. I think our current language says with council approval. I think subject to really fits the, the law better, because it is a mayoral appointment, much like the president would appoint the secretary of defense. Subject to confirmation by the senate, this is cooperation the very same way. Whereas really, I think the word with implies that you're doing it together.
Sustained.
Sustained. Sustained. Where, where this really indicates that it is the mayor's appointment, but it does have to be approved by the council. So just again, just general cleanups, really not changing much there, so.
No, if anybody has any questions on that?
Um, I'm pretty sure that $25,000 is now $10,000.
You made the point by my.
No for 1703, number one. Resolution must be passed to spend public funds in excess of $25,000. I think it got lowered to 10.
Uh, that was on the credit card.
No, that's not the credit card, it's on, I know it got changed.
Oh, they could be, I didn't, that one, I'm not proposing a change.
In fact, the change you might be referring to is the current policy?
Yeah, but I thought we did this at the same time, all of it. Because that was $25,000, we lowered everything to 10.
The only thing we've done recently is the credit card.
No, this was before you were here yet, this was a couple of years ago.
But that would have been the change for the.
I know the procurement is down to 10.
The procurement policy is lowered from 10 to 10.
I thought we did all of them at the same time.
And that chapter there is the approval of the card in council.
Where is $25,000 missing?
It's right there, number one.
Why, we did all of them at the same time.
I don't see a difference between that. And so I was proposing no changes on anything there.
Right, the only, only changes, just a matter of clarity here, the changes for the ordinance, in this amendment, would be those chap, those paragraphs that were mentioned in the amendment. Everything else would be left at 10. So for example, paragraph 23.01 on, in section two of this amendment, that would apply to a change of 2301, current ordinances, but not section 17 paragraphs. That was the intent.
See, that's correct, no?
Hi. I didn't see anything that jumped out to me. Cause any concern, I think, I mean, I think we're gonna, we're gonna roll through a lot of this.
Oh, this way, so this would be one that authorized, so back to like the list.
Yeah.
The codification, these would all be addressed under the codification. But because of bringing up the genetic inconsistency there, I wanted to get that cleaned up. And then it's like, again, when you open the box, and then you start seeing, well, here's this one, okay? Clean that one up while I'm at it. See, I could, but, but I just stop with that, and Shelley and I will be getting into the codification here, picking the little things that have some of the.
I mean, is every chapter enforced up to 23? Is there at least 23 chapters?
Oh, there's a lot more.
Oh, there's more than that.
How many, how many are there?
Like 170 something?
Yeah, probably.
Okay, so there are only two chapters, it's gonna. I'm just, I'm just trying to think, where I see this in state, right, is that it's almost like the state code. It's on the website, folks can navigate easily through it, so it's not a 300-page PDF like here you go. At least it's bracketed by chapter.
Correct, that's exactly what we're going to.
Good to see the work starting, so. I don't know, what, anybody else has concerns or would need to know more? But I, I appreciate the work on this. I mean, I think it's a good faith effort, right, so we're all assuming, there's nothing, you're gonna tell us if there's a significant change.
Correct.
I, I read through it, didn't see anything. If anybody else is uncomfortable, I think now's the time to bring that up.
Okay, hearing none, we would ask for a motion to approve ordinance 200, 233. That's an ordinance admitting to code of ordinances city about Atkins Island, 2005. Chapter 23, city administrator has the first reading. And we'd ask for a motion to approve the first reading of the amendment. Motion to approve ordinance 233, this is amendment to the code of Atkins. Motion to approve ordinance 233.
Motion to approve ordinance two thirty-three.
Oh.
Is that what, uh, that one section, taking all, remember?
Scott has a comment that, um, if you'd like to.
And I think it's fine, the qualifications section.
Right, so it's. And, uh, ordinance two thirty-three, that's the amendment.
Twenty-three oh two.
Correct, yeah. Twenty-three oh two qualifications, generally, to keep things clear in, in, you know, in the proper place, you know, inside within the rules. You'd have the qualifications and education of a person in the job description.
I think that, that way, if you wanted to amend it later, you don't have to go through an ordinance to amend it, so. If, if it's not in there, uh, it's easier, so we're nimble, but, so I'm fine if you don't want to have that.
So I guess the motion, if you entertain it, this is strike twenty-three point oh two from, uh, the ordinance two thirty-three.
Okay, so I'll add that to my, uh, motion to approve two thirty-three, um, and strike that as well.
Second.
Second by Dersky, any further questions? Hearing none. Roll call votes, Jim Kane.
Aye.
Trevor Dersky.
Aye.
EJ Bell.
Aye.
David Fisher.
Aye.
Samantha Peterson.
Aye.
Motion carries for the first reading. And moving on to, uh, a motion to approve ordinance two hundred and thirty-four. This is an ordinance admitting the code of ordinances, uh, as mentioned before, um, for chapter fifteen, the mayor, and chapter seventeen, the council. And this again would be the first reading of ordinance two hundred and thirty-four.
Motion to approve ordinance two thirty-four.
Second.
Motion by Fisher, second by Dersky, and for the comments. Hearing none, the roll call, Jim Kane.
Aye.
Trevor Dersky.
Aye.
EJ Bell.
Aye.
David Fisher.
Aye.
Samantha Peterson.
Aye.
Motion carries. And then moving on to item number six, the city administrator's report tonight, Scott.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Uh, just real quick, uh, council, I just wanted to update you on, you just got so many filings. So, uh, GASBEE seventy-seven, GASBEE stands for Governmental Accounting Standards Bureau. So we're required annually to submit to, uh, the state, uh, when we have property tax rebate agreements. So the state department of management, that's kind of some sample forms that we fill out, we submit those. So in this case, we do have the property tax rebate, uh, with Stonebridge Development LLC for the housing development project up there. Uh, so, uh, this fiscal year twenty-five, uh, we identified the rebate payment back to them. I think it was around under thirty-eight thousand dollars, something like that. Was the total rebate payment for fiscal year twenty-five to Stonebridge Development LLC. So we have to certify that through this GASBEE letter and then mail that to these other taxing entities that are affected by that. So when they're audited, their auditors file a request, a letter with us, asking for a copy of that letter. Turquoise sent me the first one the other day, so it kind of got me going to get it done a little sooner. So we got that, uh, that completed and now that is completion date of August thirty-first, so we're ahead of the game on that one. Uh, done with that one. By, by the way, I, I think Shelley mentioned she's already, probably beat me with, with hers already, so you were done in July, I think so. So we're not far behind. Uh, the annual debt report to the straight state treasurer's office, uh, that's also got to be filed by, uh, the end of August. And we completed that indicating debt for fiscal year twenty-four, our debt was five point nine million. Fiscal year twenty-five, we increased it to seven point five million, of course, that's due to the fire station bond, bond issue, so. Uh, and then just another one, fiscal year twenty-four audit, we're hoping that we'll have the final report from the auditor's office, uh, maybe prior to the next council meeting, so I'd like to maybe have a meeting then, I can review that with everybody, kind of go over that report, so I'm hopeful that that will happen on the twenty-four. Where that really comes into play is that we can't enter into the engagement letter with the subsequent firm that will use private CPA firm and tell that final audit is done. So, so if I did that, it's very likely that we could have the review of that fiscal year twenty-four audit, I'm sure next council meeting, as well as the engagement letter for fiscal year twenty-five's audit as well. So, yeah, like Trevor mentioned, gotta keep moving one right into another. So it seems like we're just wrapping up fiscal year twenty-four audit, we'll be heading right into fiscal year twenty-five here pretty quick, so. Uh, and then lastly, uh, the city hall, uh, community room audiovisual system, so we're live on both Facebook and, um, YouTube here tonight. So I, I'll have to go back and look at the audio, that's our microphone up there hanging from the ceiling. So we, we had a few glitches with that, but we're having the folks come back and work on that. It's a good company, and they, they are striving to want to make, make it right. So whatever it takes, if it does sound better, we'll keep working, working towards that, so. And that's all I get.
Okay, then as far as the mayor's report, um, just want to thank all the volunteers, recognize them that participated in the Atkins Watermelon Days this past weekend, um, had a good crowd out and, um, there were some, uh, tense moments there with the weather is coming along, but, uh, ports only held off and, uh, the event was completed. And fireworks were enjoyed by everyone, so again, thanks to the volunteers and the businesses and, uh, the amount of time invested in that. Tended a EMA meeting on the Dwayne Arnold Energy Center startup, that work continues. And then a bonus work at the county level for planning and, uh, some approvals and such coming down the pipe, but, uh, that project is still much of interest by the, uh, by the company there. And then the meeting was held today, which includes, um, funding of open space. That's a state, uh, program that provides grant money for open space and conservation areas. And that's, hopefully, in the future, utilize some grant monies from there for, uh, those open space projects, so. All right, and with that then, moving on to the consent agenda. Uh, that would be the approval of the abstracted bills claims is submitted, uh, approval of July twenty-two, twenty-twenty-five city council meeting minutes, class C retail alcohol license for Bobby T's Bar and Grill, Main Avenue. Approval of the retail tobacco license for Casey's Marketing Company. And, um, also resolution two zero two five, resolution approving fiscal year inter-fund transfer. And, um, resolution two zero two five eight three, resolution authorizing city administrator, city clerk to have access to the safety deposit box. Consent agenda. Motion by Kane to approve. Second by Dersky. Any questions?
Can you even know the safety deposit box?
I, we're trying to figure out what's in it, so.
I haven't even noticed one.
That's some of the, uh.
The thumb drive, or Paul put the fix ordinances on it. They're in there all the time.
But some of the, uh, the backlog to bringing Shelley on board is just all the accesses and getting all those signatures and everything straightened out. So everything's proper and, uh, it takes a lot of time to do that, so they're, they're working through that process. Okay, so, hearing no further discussion, we'll move on to the roll call. Jim Kane.
Aye.
David Fisher.
Aye.
EJ Bell.
Aye.
Samantha Peterson.
Aye.
And Trevor Dersky.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to item number nine, this is other business.
Yeah, I've got it. I want to talk about today, last week, or last meeting, we had a discussion on the budget. And it was brought up that we had a two-million-dollar surplus and that there's a lot of consternation. Trevor brought it up that over the purchase of a new truck and a generator. And that, uh, alluding to the fact that we shouldn't have consternation over purchasing stuff that, I would disagree that it's a waste of money. During that discussion of the new pickup truck, I, I said we've got a twenty-twenty-two pickup truck here. We also have a twenty-oh-seven pickup truck. And that, um, that, we, we really don't need it. It's not a need, it's a law. And we talked about it during budget, we talked about it during, um, the purchase of it. We had just bought a brand-new pickup truck for the firemen, uh, not too long before that. Again, I, I found it to be a waste of money for the city, um, and that, um, and I brought it up to the fact that we need to be spending the money wisely because we have a lot of water issues. And I think Trevor brought up at that point in time that, um, seventy, eighty thousand dollars isn't going to pay for our water issues. The generator was brought up. And I said, I can't support the purchase of the generator. Due to the fact that during the deratio, we did not need that, another generator, that we already had a generator. Furthermore, that we, the generator that we had, um, supplied water to us during the deratio, which was, we were down for seven days. And again, I thought that, that wait, that it would be a waste of money and again, would be a cost that we could use that, those funds to be used for our water issues. So that's now a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that I deem is wasted. The guy that I thought that I voted for, um, I expected him to say, well, we've got a two-million-dollar surplus. We need to reduce our tax burden on our, on our, uh, people in this town. Again, the way I read this budget is completely different than Trevor did. Of that two million dollars, one million, two-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand, four-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars is for the fire station. The generator project still isn't paid for, that's eighty-two thousand dollars that we've got in that budget. Also, the ninety thousand dollars for the pipe bursting project is still in here that we haven't paid for. And then I looked through this even, even further, and there's a lot of things that we budgeted for that we didn't spend the money. But we spent the money on stuff that we didn't need. It was a law. And again, I think we need to, we need to spend our money wisely. Like I said when I ran for this, that we need to address our water issues and that needs to be our priority. Not buying a truck, not buying a generator that doesn't supply anything to our water problems in town. Again, we've, what we spent our money on, we always spend our money on the toys. And we, we, we could be spending it on, on the right things, that's what I'm saying. And that's what I'm gonna do for, from here on out as well.
Other business?
Yeah, I, we got it. Talking of this conversation here we had, um.
Well, maybe we should make it a topic of, of future meeting.
Yeah, I mean, how, how many wells did we have up during the deratio? How many wells were working when the deratio struck?
Yeah, why?
Why? How many wells had generators on? So the well that was down, was that the well with the generator or without?
That was without.
So what had happened, what would happen if it was the other way around? If the well that was down during the deratio happened to be the one with the generator on? Can we move the generator?
No, it's a fixed.
Why would you need to move the generator, you got a well.
You can't, the well won't work without a generator when the power's not running.
The generator's right there on the well.
That happened to be the well that was up, it's just, it's just.
However, the, the, that one could be up anytime. It's our main route, water.
It also go down. So why not have a generator on the other well, like you make them both?
Why would it go down? The pump went out, that's why the other one's down.
Why did the?
We're talking about deratio, the power went out.
No, the pump.
The power went out, so therefore we have the generator.
The pump is down on the second well, that didn't have, that happened to be the one that didn't have the generator.
Or we would have been.
I mean, I could have made it a worse situation, I had both pumps run out. I'm just saying, you're describing this like it's Taj Mahal, you call it a toy. No, no, this is, this is building extra resiliency in a critical function of the city. That's what it is.
It's a waste of money in my opinion.
That, that can be your opinion, but that would make it true.
And it is, but you don't have to tell me that I need to change my opinion and that I need to not fight for what I think is right for the citizens.
No, what I could ask for is for, is for either communication ahead of the vote to say, I got problems on this.
You need, we got told about it the night that we, that we received the information on it. And we had to vote that night. There was a lot of questions and you guys proceeded with the vote and voted yes to, to approve it because it was right at the last minute.
I don't, that's not how I would call that at all. There was a power outage, there was a presentation made. I checked in with Sandy that morning, have you heard from anybody, is there any concern? No?
I had concerns for budgeting even.
My, my request, it is not criticism of anyone's opinion. My, my request is, this time, if, like, we're gonna close this gap, but there was this sentiment out there, there were comments being made like the town would be bankrupted, this budget will destroy the town. That didn't happen, and we, that's, that's fair to call that out.
But it's not fair to call out a two-million-dollar surplus and all this other budgeting. You've got a master's in accounting, why would you make people believe that we have two-million dollars in surplus? Because we don't.
The amount, budget, seven point seven.
There's still one point two, there's one million, two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars at a fire station, sitting there.
That came in well low estimated, and we argued about that for months, right?
Read the spreadsheet.
Dave.
I'd be willing to share it with anybody in this town.
Dave, I promise you, I have, the spreadsheet's an problem for me.
They're not for me either.
And we also have to remember that there could be different opinions on, on the, the, any topics, and.
Then you're fully aware of other communication that happened outside of this too, that I'm speaking to. So, so it didn't need to go, it did not need to get the animus that we got to with this, that was my whole point. We can come here, we can be reasonable and, and, and figure this stuff out. And I think with, with the current staff we have, I think we're gonna start it a lot earlier. Again, from the conversation that we had, which is almost two years ago now, about this, uh, and where we ended up is a big gap, a big gap, because we knew, we knew that the budget had numbers in there that, that seemed high, that didn't seem to make sense. And, and even this last budget cycle, we tried to, we tried to root that out and figure it out. And we, at the same time, invested on financial reporting, we brought in ESG, we brought on consultants. So, so it's, it's all, all of those things working together, but the hysteria and the, and like, again, it was asking, it was saying, we, we didn't end up where, where some people thought we would. Like, again, can we acknowledge that? And maybe, maybe we can do it a little more collaboratively this time. And we have worked together, issues have been raised on both sides, where I personally come in and be like, no, no, like, yeah, let's wait, let's hold the vote. But it may be in that case, we missed an opportunity to do that, to make everybody comfortable. And I'll take that as a lesson learned for myself. But the actual spin came in way lower than what was forecasted.
That's because we didn't spend the money accordingly.
We, I knew we weren't going to.
You can see it in the budget.
Yeah.
Well, I think we'll have to let, let the conversation. Well, I think we'll have to let, let the conversation end that we have two different opinions, um, we can ask for a, um, explanation of the, of the numbers.
There's no choice, there's no choice, the facts are, the city has a very low levy rate for the county, even for the county.
Yeah, the reason that I have this, and that it's a reason why that's there is because of myself.
Well, but, but let's see, let's, it's not all bad, it's, there's...
I, I know, because I made sure it's not, I mean, we have council members that are sitting here that wanted it to go almost to sixteen percent.
Right.
I mean, I, I mean, I was sitting at the top of my lungs.
Let's describe the range, I was just, I'm just trying to somebody propagate with spending somehow.
So, yes, I know all about that.
All right, any other business?
I was gonna bring up, and I will as well, there's nearby towns, so I have just my own research and actually networking, uh, actively, considering you can find the minutes offline, I'll tell you where to find them, uh, figuring out other arrangements besides what they currently have for the water and sewer source, um, there's specifically the sewer rates, uh, for the Cedar Rapids, is there, there's a big concern with, with increases for outlying towns, they feel like they're getting bigger increases in Cedar Rapids residents, and now some of those towns are trying to figure out to do what we've already done, and so I think that that, just wanted to share that, that's also good news, um, we talked about the sewer and water rates, they, they are elevated, but I think what, what we might see in the next five years, I mean, I think we talked about, is that a lot of people are gonna actually catch up, and will be averaging in a better place, because we've been paying off these assets now for ten years, ten years, seven, eight years, and, and, uh, so, so I, that, I also feel like we can, we can start to talk a little more positively about, we've got issues resolved with the water tower, certainly, but, but other towns are, are in a bad spot, and they're just kinda coming to do that.
All right. Well, with that, um, we're gonna hand a motion to adjourn, we're gonna get to the business proceeding.
Motion be adjourned.
Motion by Kane.
Second.
Second by Bell. Roll call votes, Jim Kane.
Aye.
David Fisher.
Aye.
EJ Bell.
Aye.
Samantha Peterson.
Aye.
And Trevor Dersky.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you everyone, have a good evening.